Welcome to the September 11th City Council Work Session. I think we're two councilors down today, so both Councilor Pryor and Councilor Polling had other places that they needed to be today. I expect to Councilor Evans will be here as far as I know.
I don't know.
I saw an email saying-
I don't think it was today. Maybe it was, but I thought it was another day. Anyway, we're going to be talking about the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn over to Denny for a presentation.
Thank you. Council has requested this work session asking specifically for a cost-benefit analysis of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. And I'll just mention that following the request for this work session, Councilor Brown also submitted several questions, and we have responded, and those are included in Attachment B in the packet. And then there were some additional questions that came in late yesterday that we have addressed, and those are sitting at your table. We sent out this morning in an email. Today, we're here to provide information. There's no action requested. I'll provide a brief overview of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, and I'll review some urban renewal investments from a cost-benefit standpoint. And when we considered a cost-benefit analysis approach, we assumed that the analysis would be used by council in its role as the urban renewal agency, as basically the framework to make future decisions about expenditures in the Riverfront Urban Renewal District that may occur sometime in the future. And to better form these decisions, we assumed that it was important to start by looking back at how urban renewal funds have been used in the past and look at some of the public benefits or the outcomes that have been achieved in the Riverfront District. This retrospective analysis, as we're calling it, is summarized in Attachment C in your packet, and it basically includes two primary investment areas, which I'll review briefly. The first are the initial investments that we made to create the Riverfront Research Park in the early days of the urban renewal district, and more recently, the investments that we made to redevelop the Agropac industrial site for the federal courthouse and the credit union projects. Looking forward, we assume that there will be some major opportunities associated with the implementation of the E-Web Master Plan vision, and that these opportunities are not likely to be realized without some form of public investment. And the Riverfront Urban Renewal District resources will be considered as a potential source of funds for these investments, and those would be specific investments that will be needed to achieve some possible outcomes in the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. Therefore, we've considered a prospective cost-benefit analysis using elements of the E-Web Master Plan implementation as the kind of prospective use of urban renewal funds in the future. And that analysis is included in Attachment D, and I'll review that here briefly. This is the boundary of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, basically bounded by Franklin on the south, the river on the north, Pearl Street on the west, and it includes all of the E-Web property there along the riverbank. Just a quick, some important facts related to the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. The plan was established in 1985. It was amended in 2004, and the plan expires in 2024. The maximum indebtedness in this urban renewal district, which is basically the spending limit authorized by the plan, is $34.8 million, and we currently have $28.3 million remaining under that spending limit. Since its establishment, the total tax assessed value in the district has more than doubled from $50 million to $109 million. The district is expected to generate approximately $990,000 in tax increment revenue in fiscal year 14. And I would just note that it's important that it's recognized that City Council, acting as the urban renewal agency, approves all expenditures in the Riverfront District over So this basically shows how the Riverfront District lays in relation to the downtown urban renewal district boundary, which is there to the west of the Riverfront District, and the downtown plan boundary as well. The Riverfront District represents, well, in combination with the downtown district, both urban renewal districts represent less than 1% of the overall city limit area that we have in these two districts. I would just note that Springfield has two very similar urban renewal districts to the east. They have their Glenwood Riverfront area urban renewal district, and they also have a downtown urban renewal district as well. By comparison, the two Springfield districts' total coverage is about 11% of their city limits. Further north, if you look to Portland, they have 13 urban renewal districts, which basically consume about 15% of their total city limits, which is the maximum that's allowed by state statute. The statute only allows 15% of the city limits to be urban renewal areas. Again, I mentioned some focus areas. In the early days of the district, we looked at the Riverfront Research Park area, again later, the courthouse area, which you really can't see very well there, and then, again, focused on the future, primarily on the E-Web property, but it's assumed that there may be some other projects outside of the E-Web area, for example, along Franklin Boulevard, the Walnut Station area, 8th Avenue around, and hopefully, a new city hall. Those are some other areas that we might look at, but those are kind of unknown at this time, so at this point, we kind of focused on the future being the E-Web Master Plan implementation. I want to start by providing a financial overview of the district, which covers the life of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, which is basically fiscal year '87 through fiscal year '13, which is a 27-year period. The total tax revenue collected in the district during the life of the district is $12.6 million, and that basically is an average of about $450,000 per year that's generated in the Riverfront District. It's important to keep in mind the characteristics of the district. There's a significant percentage of the property in this district that's tax-exempt. For example, it's owned by the university, it's owned by E-Web, the courthouse property, there's some city-owned property. And the private property actually in this district is actually not very dense. If you look at Franklin Boulevard, for example, there's a lot of kind of low-density, low-value uses. So the result really is that it's taken many years for the district to grow to its current level of almost $1 million a year in property tax revenue. This other revenue category includes sale of property, rent, interest earnings in the district. For example, we sold property for the courthouse. We sold property to the credit union. We leased property within the district. We leased property to the university near the research park for parking, for example. As far as expenses, they're really broken into two categories: capital projects and other expenses. Capital projects are really things like property acquisition, infrastructure investments that are made by the urban renewal agency, and these are basically actual project costs that have occurred in the district, and they total about $8.8 million from the beginning of time in the district. There's also this other expense category, and basically that includes district administration, which includes staffing, legal, planning, and some examples would be legal costs associated with the condemnation procedures for the courthouse project and the subsequent sale of the properties to the courthouse and the credit union, some planning efforts, including the Riverfront Urban Renewal Plan update, the downtown plan, the courthouse district concept plan, Walnut Station planning, and most recently, the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan. If you look at the revenues and the expenses, basically the difference is about $7 million, and that is basically approximately the cash balance that we currently have on hand in the Riverfront District. So as I mentioned earlier, in the early days, the investments focused on creation of the Riverfront Research Parks. I wanted to just look at this for a second. Urbanal investments focused primarily on infrastructure needed to establish the research park. For example, property acquisition for Riverfront Parkway, which is the entrance of the research park, construction of the railroad underpass and bike roundabout at the Oxon Foot Bridge, construction of Mill Race Drive, including street, sidewalk, lighting, sewer, storm drainage improvements, and construction of the Mill Race Bike Path. In total, the district has invested about $1.1 million in the research park, and these funds were matched with approximately $6 million in state lottery funds and NoDART funds totaling approximately $6 million. These infrastructure improvements are heavily used. They were critical in that they preceded the building of some of the buildings in the park, and in some cases, those improvements actually coincided with some of the buildings that were built in the research park. The building investments that have made in the park include the construction of three major buildings. This represents approximately $34 million in investment, new office construction in the research park. Two of the buildings are privately owned and paying property taxes. The most recent is the ORI Building, which is tax-exempt, but ORI is a major employer. This is a list of the current tenants in the research park, and when considering the outcomes or benefit associated with the early investments in the research park, it's important to consider that these tenants currently represent over 700 jobs located in the research park. They include companies like Electrical Geodesics, Marker Gene Technologies, that were spun out of the university's technology transfer program. And most of these are professional, technical jobs that pay, on average, greater than the average wage in the community, typically at least 15% higher than the average wage for our region. And these 700 jobs in the research park represent about a $30 million payroll that's here local in our economy. So in summary, the public benefits from the urban renewal investments made in the research park have leveraged about $40 million in new infrastructure and construction, new employment[731.18][731.18]intensive commercial buildings that generate about $180,000 per year in property taxes, over 700 jobs within sectors that pay higher-than-average wages, $30 million payroll, support infrastructure investments that provide access to the river. And these improvements really continue to advance our regional prosperity economic development goals, include jobs, tech transfer out of the university, business incubation, and some of the publicity that the research park has gotten through companies like Electrical Geodesics and Marker Gene Technologies are really putting Eugene on the map and helping kind of our regional identity as a place to do business. So the second investment area that I want to focus on is the courthouse area, the Agropac Courthouse Redevelopment Project. This operated as a cannery for over 100 years. Chiquita was the last operator. They were planning to close their facility and consolidate it with other facilities up north. At this time, we had some compatible goals to remove the industrial infrastructure, the brownfield conditions, which were a major barrier between downtown and the river, and we also had the goal of locating a new federal courthouse in our downtown core, and this was one of a handful of sites that the courthouse was considering for a location. And of course, there were significant challenges associated with this redevelopment, and the urban renewal investment was a primary tool that we used to remove the redevelopment barriers. So here's some things that we did. We acquired the Chiquita property for $4.1 million. We acquired the Autocraft property for $1.65 million. We relocated Autocraft to another place in the city for $550,000, and we demolished the old industrial improvements on this site. Once the site was cleared, we sold property to the GSA for the federal courthouse for $3.9 million. We conducted related road improvements of $350,000, and this wasn't the total cost, it was a total of about a $9 million project, included things like enhanced lighting and sidewalks and undergrounding utilities. We sold property to the Northwest Community Credit Union recently for $1.2 million, and we've relocated the Agropac Office Building, which has included hazardous material abatement and relocation of the Agropac Office Building. So what are some of the outcomes associated with these investments? First, we've taken a major step to realize our vision to connect downtown to the river, specifically the downtown plan envisioned 8th Avenue as a great street with emphasis on making 8th Avenue a unified inviting path to the river. The community has long aspired to reconnect to the river, and removing a major barrier, an old industrial brownfield, which had reached the end of its useful life, was something that the investments accomplished, obviously. Clearly, we have a more attractive pattern of reinvestment emerging in this district, a new $80 million courthouse that's come an architectural landmark at the entrance of our downtown, and this kind of reinvestment really has made this area more attractive for other reinvestments. The credit union has started construction of its facility next door. It's a $20 million headquarter facility, expected to house about 200 to 300 new employees in our downtown core, again, helping advance us towards the river, one more step towards the river with this particular project. In summary, the courthouse Agropac redevelopment property, there are several benefits highlighted: 100 million in new investment, 200-plus jobs, $170,000 a year in new property tax revenue, strong architectural statement made by the courthouse, and most importantly, these investments are clearly a major leap forward in as far as our community vision for creating a downtown that's connected to the river. As I mentioned earlier, we felt that it was also important to look forward and consider a perspective view of how Riverfront Urban Renewal Funds might be used in the future and what outcomes or benefits might be achieved. Clearly, the approved Riverfront Master Plan is a product of significant community input, and it's really kind of a logical place to start as we look at how we might use urban renewal in the future. We just looked at the heavy lift that was required to redevelop the courthouse property, and if we kind of fast-forward and look at the potential redevelopment of the E-Web property, I think you'll find there's a lot of similarities. Both properties have decades of industrial use, some historic remnants remaining on the property. Both properties are owned by non-city entities that were vacating at the end of the useful life of the property. Both are characterized by a crossing problem. In the case of the courthouse project, it was crossing Mill Street from downtown. In the case of the E-Web property, it's crossing the railroad tracks to get to the site. Existing transportation infrastructure was not considered to be adequate in both cases, as well as the utilities are not considered to be adequate to support new development on the site. Market conditions in both cases were not such that we expect to attract new investment without some kind of public investment. And finally, both sites are basically experienced brownfield conditions. In the case of the E-Web property, it's brownfield that's directly on the river. Based on the experience of redeveloping the Agropac property and the other experience we've had redeveloping downtown, again, we assume that some investment would be made. So we made some assumptions about the public and private investment that may happen or may occur in the E-Web Master Plan vision if it were to be built out, and we've attempted to forecast some of the costs and some of the outcomes. Of course, it's important to recognize that these are just kind of assumptions at this point, that we've made no commitments, or we're not really asking council to take any action at this time. First, let's just look at some of the cost elements. Getting across the railroad tracks, just for analysis purposes, we've estimated that to be about $1.5 million. If you recall, 8th Avenue, when the street improvements happened around the courthouse, was designed and realigned to actually cross the railroad tracks and enter into the Riverfront Parks and open space. Of course, the Riverfront Master Plan has a park and open space riparianage component. We've estimated that cost as well. There will be some road improvements, and we've kind of thrown in an estimate here, and this is clearly not the total cost, but in the past, in some of the other areas, urban renewal funds have been used for a portion of those road improvements, things like enhanced lighting and sidewalks and those kinds of amenities. And historic buildings, there's a couple of historic buildings, the steam plant, the Botus Building. We would expect that for those to be redeveloped, there would have to be some form of public involvement, just because I think it's pretty overwhelming, some of the costs that might be experienced redeveloping those properties. Finally, we've assumed that, you know, there would be some project delivery administrative costs associated with carrying out the E-Web Master Plan. We've estimated the cost, and that's basically just costs for the remaining life of the district, which has about 10 more years. So when we looked at the benefits, we came up with about 10 different categories, and this is all included, again, in Attachment D, and I won't get into too much detail. But they include private investment, new construction and jobs, increased property value and tax revenue, implementing Envision Eugene. Of course, we aspire to have more density in the core, new multifamily units in the core, implementing the downtown plan. We have clear goals to connect downtown to the river, create a people place along the river, implementing the Regional Prosperity Economic Development Plan, which includes jobs and higher wages, improving the region's economic identity by having a vibrant, attractive riverfront, and really having an attractive asset for downtown employees. So having a viable, active riverfront, we think, would be a really attractive asset as people look at it as a place to do business downtown Eugene in particular. Restoring habitat, protecting water quality, implementing Climate and Energy Action Plan. The Riverfront is kind of an ideal 20-minute neighborhood. Enhancing cultural education, increasing visitor tourism, access to recreation, et cetera. So just a couple of things more. I know we've covered a lot. There are just a couple of observations. Urban renewal is one of the tools that council has put into place to achieve some specific public benefit outcomes that are defined in the various plans. We tried to highlight some past outcomes and potential future outcomes, but at this point, we don't really know exactly how urban renewal funds might be spent to advance the community goals for downtown, particularly along the riverfront. However, we do know that there have been years of public engagement. They have basically said that the existing condition, the kind of vacant industrial brownfield on the river, is not the preferred outcome. We know that urban renewal is an existing tool. It's an existing tool that's already in place. It has current financial capacity. We know that it's one of several tools that we have been discussing in regards to implementation of Envision Eugene, and we know that it's been used in the past to transform blighted areas when the community's plans and goals are thoughtfully being implemented.
Questions?
Yes.
I assume during the discussion, but I may ask you later to highlight some of those questions and answers that are in there, because that's a lot of information that the public doesn't necessarily have in front of them. George, you're first for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much for the presentation, Denny, and thanks for the material and the AIS, and thanks for the answers to my supplemental questions at the last minute. And of course, I've already thought of a few more, but I won't burden you with those right now. Since I requested this work session request, I would like to just present the brief rationale why I did this. You know, the downtown urban renewal plan is pretty much set. It's, you know, when the debt's paid off, it will expire in a few years. When I first got on council, about six months after I did, this is about four years ago, the mayor put me on a council subcommittee, along with councilors Pryor and Ortiz, to meet with city and county staff and human services providers to see if we could somehow conjure a way to stabilize human service funding. The material, we really didn't have any new ideas. We looked at a lot of old material, and it was hard to think of another way to do that. We looked at this material, and I imagine the budget committee's going to look at it again. It was called "Meeting the Challenge: A Report on Other Possible New Revenue Sources," which council didn't take action on any of them. So I thought, gee, where could we possibly get some money? And I turned my vision to the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, which currently denies about $350,000 a year to the general fund, and the city's share of the balance would be about $2.5 million in one-time funds, but it'd be 350, and then there's some bond payments. It's closer to half a million dollars a year that could go to the general fund to be used for human services or anything else, of course. So that made me think, you know, has it been effective in meeting its stated goals? As I read the plan and the report, and became skeptical. Does it meet its stated goals to justify the diversion of taxes from the general fund and core services through the years? You know, does the "but for" argument, that was the original argument for urban renewal in 1947, when it was created by the federal government, the "but for" argument, that there is no development that would happen in the decaying course of the eastern cities, mostly, unless there was a public investment, and they came up with urban renewal. And it's more through the years to kind of like, to stimulate any kind of development, even in areas that aren't necessarily decayed with crumbling housing and crumbling infrastructure. So that was the rationale for, to do a cost-benefit analysis. Just look at the numbers, look at the money, and ask ourselves, has it been effective? Or could these resources, would they be better used in another place?
I interrupt you.
Thank you.
We'll be back to hear the next segment. Betty, you're next.
Thank you. I beat Mike to it for once.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Good job, George, and good job, Denny, too, on your salesmanship. I have a few questions and comment. I'm always puzzled when people say we need to be connected to the river. All you need to do is go out the door of our former city hall and walk three blocks, and you're at the river. And there are other places, too, many places where it's easy to connect to the river. It's not, some cities, it's hidden, but it isn't here. It's easy. That's a comment. Another comment is, this urban renewal money is really diverted from the general fund and from the county funds and from the education funds. It isn't new money, it's diversions. I thought I was asking questions, I am, but another comment, that bridge, a part of the Riverfront Research Park did not take the place of any blighted area. In fact, it put in some blights, a new road, an underpass to nowhere, and a road to nowhere. That's still, as far as I know, that road still doesn't go anywhere, except there's a road out there in the middle of the river property. And so, back to the, now to the questions. I would like a breakdown on how much that diverted money goes, how much of it goes to each interval, but you can give us that later. You mentioned the new city hall. Are you saying we would expand it to include the city hall site?
No, the city hall isn't in the urban Riverfront District.
It isn't?
The city hall property is not.
But you mentioned city hall when you were talking about-
But if you look in the downtown plan, one of the primary objectives is to use 8th Avenue as the main connection to the river, and of course, city hall is on 8th Avenue. So the vision in the downtown plan is really that 8th Avenue is connected all the way from Walnut Street to the river.
But then I misunderstood when you said something about using the money for city hall.
There is a portion of, I didn't say for city hall, I was trying to reference, for example, 8th Avenue improvements that might occur in proximity to city hall, let's say, in front of city hall, as part of a city hall project, and a bigger vision to kind of connect that civic street, 8th Avenue is a great street, as a civic street, connect that civic street to the river.
And another question, how many, and I know some of them did, how many of the tenants of the Riverfront Research Park moved from other places in Eugene? I know that some, at least one moved from downtown, and several of them moved from other places.
There are many tenants, and I don't know that answer, but we could figure that out.
But those shouldn't be counted as things that happened because of urban renewal. Actually, when we were trying to improve downtown, some people moved from downtown over there because it was a- over there because it was a tax problems, tax incentives perhaps, maybe because it was a more attractive place, but we were defeating the purpose of improving the center downtown. And I think those are my questions for now. I look forward to hearing more. Thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate George asking for this work session. I appreciate the questions that you sent along, too. Some of this information is really helpful to me. It kind of proves out a point I've always had about this particular issue around tax increment financing and urban renewal. I think your question that you ended with in your first round, George, is the perfect one. Has it worked? Does it work? I think the chief benefit of tax increment financing, the most important thing, the most important public benefit of urban renewal, is its capacity to borrow from a future increase in property value to accelerate that increase now, to make properties within that district worth more money, and thus increase the amount of tax revenue we get from it sooner than would otherwise be the case. And you bring up the but-for question, and that's an interesting one. A lot of the information here from staff answering your questions very well is information about what would happen if, in the rest of the city as opposed to the district. I'd love to get more information that addresses that but-for question. If we hadn't had it there, what would have happened? But of course, that's really difficult to get. For me, the problem with urban renewal, and the reason I frown at it, is because it's my opinion, we use it for the real wrong reasons, and that's why, in my opinion, it hasn't worked very well. It's worked to do some good, but if you look at Slide 6, for example, where it says retrospective summary, Denny, my question is this: of the $14.6 million we've spent from the district, how much of that money, what percentage was spent on a public project, like the federal courthouse, and how much, as a percentage of that money, was spent on a private project? What would you estimate? Just round numbers.
Well, if you look at the, it's likely to be a very high percentage, because most of it is used for roads, sidewalks, bike paths, a courthouse project, road improvements around the courthouse.
Right.
Those are all public uses. The credit union, I guess, would be the first major private development project that we have advanced with urban renewal, in the Riverfront District, at least.
Thank you. That's exactly my point. When you look at the assessed valuation difference between the city as a whole, which saw an average annual increase of 6.9% over this period of increase in property value, the Riverfront Urban Renewal District had only a 5.6% increase in value. Those against the idea of urban renewal will often argue that, look, it's not working. The city's property values are increasing faster in places where it isn't urban renewal. But my point is, we're using it the wrong way. We're using it on public projects rather than on private ones that would actually succeed at increasing the property value, and that's what we should be targeting its use for in the future. Those projects that will actually increase property values and actually return greater tax benefits in the future.
Claire?
I just had some very basic questions. In the, I noticed that there's this section of the Riverfront Urban Renewal District that juts into Downtown, and I was curious if that was part of the amendment in 2004, or was that part of the original?
That was part of the amendment, as I recall, in 2004, where we expanded the district to the west, and basically it now touches the Downtown District. Historically, in the early days, it did not. And I don't recall, but I think the E-Web property was part of that expansion as well in 2004.
I don't know if you're able to answer this, but I'm just wondering if there's any history on why that expansion came into Downtown as opposed to having the Downtown Urban Renewal District expand itself into Pearl and Oak.
It has to do with the state statutes. I think we had maximized our potential expansion in the Downtown District, but we did have some expansion capacity in the Riverfront District.
Gotcha. And then, could you explain a little bit more about, I can kind of assess from the language in this, the answers to the questions, but what the frozen base is referred to and how that works?
I'm going to defer maybe to Sue as the financial expert.
The frozen base is, just at the most simple level, taking the assessed value that was located in that area at the time the area was created, and making sure that the taxing districts that were getting taxes from that property inside that area continued to receive those taxes over time. That's what the frozen base represents.
I didn't understand the last part of what you said.
So if there, when this district was created, it had about $32 million of assessed value, and the city, the county, the school districts, and so forth, were receiving taxes based on that amount of value inside the district. And so the idea of the frozen base is that the city, county, school districts continue to get those taxes. Any new taxes that are generated by value increases inside the district go, get reinvested into the district.
Gotcha. So, and then that was readjusted in '07? Is that what I see?
Readjusted a couple of times. One time when our tax system changed, it had to be adjusted because the whole system changed. And then it was adjusted again as a result of the 2004 Plan Amendment.
Great, thank you. And then my last question is, would you say, Denny, there are still parts of the urban renewal, excuse me, the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, that would be considered blighted still?
I think if you look at the, if you look at our riverfront, it's a brownfield. It's a vacated, it's got 100, it's, you know, 100-plus years of industrial use, it has contamination, it's severely underutilized, potentially very valuable property, however, if a lot of those barriers were removed. So absolutely, I think the riverfront is, would definitely fit into that kind of brownfield blighted condition.
Thank you.
Just a couple comments, picking up on the question about the frozen base. So the notion of the frozen base, if I understand it correctly, was to hold those who'd been receiving taxes from it harmless, that they would continue to receive that. They're not gaining anymore as it gains, but they're not losing either. That's sort of the notion of it?
Simply stated, yes.
Yes. I just wanted, I'm trying to do it simply. The other thing that I want to understand is, because Mike brought this up, it's sort of the philosophy of urban renewal program, because his statement that it's being misused unless it increased property value for public, of a private property value. And then I've heard over many discussions in this community about the community's willingness to use it for private purposes, and their belief that it has to serve their public interests to warrant it being used. So could you just kind of explain from this, from the, when it was put into play, what, how it crosses those two ideas that we continually hear about in our community?
Yeah. I think the best way to state it is that this is a tool that council has put in place to achieve some specific public outcomes. And at every moment where we make a major urban renewal expenditure, there's a moment where council gets to decide whether or not, and the community in a lot of respects gets to decide whether those public investments are going to generate the kind of public benefit that we aspire to. So, you know, just looking into the future, there will be opportunities, as we look at the riverfront or other potential investments in the district, for public engagement to look more deeply into what are the real costs and benefits of these investments, whatever they might be, and for council to really make a decision to move forward or not with those investments based on a more detailed cost-benefit analysis. We've kind of done the thousand-foot look here, because we don't really know how we're going to spend urban renewal funds in the future. But when we get to that moment, council clearly, and the community clearly, has an opportunity to weigh in and decide whether or not this is a good use of resources, or maybe there's a better use somewhere.
Well, let me just say that, again, sounding simple, I guess, but to me, it's like, on one side, you can make the argument that if you improve the value you get from a property investment, they play more, that those taxes will benefit our community, and that's our public interest. You can also make the argument that doing buildings, using it to build something that serves the public, serves the public interest, too, the infrastructure things that we talked about. You could also make the argument, and I think a pretty strong argument, one of the reasons we invest in infrastructures, because things tend to grow up around that, and so you actually get the growth of those taxes and that private base by putting that public infrastructure in there. So I can see value in both sides of the conversation, and often in our community, we try to pose them as this is right or this is right. And I think there's a way of looking at that from different lenses, where you get different kinds of benefit for different kinds of investments.
I think there's some good examples. Downtown, the library is an excellent example. I think there's over $20 million in Downtown urban renewal funds invested in the library. Might not have a direct financial benefit, but it has a huge community benefit, and at that moment, that was gauged to be a prudent investment because of that particular outcome. There's been private development that happened after that, you know, the Broadway Commerce Center and the Taco Time Building, and we like to think that a lot of those public investments led things that happened later that were more private-oriented. And the Riverfront District is probably not unlike Downtown. The courthouse, although it's not taxable, we, it's a huge architectural statement right there on the entrance of Downtown. I'm sure the credit union factored that in when they looked at that site. If there was nothing on that property, that private investments would probably not have occurred. So all of these things are connected, but the whole but-for argument is always a really interesting, and it seems to be something that we do a lot.
Well, I guess I would just encourage us to look through both windows. And then the final thing I want to say is, like other places, businesses can outgrow the spaces that they're in, and so when they want to expand and they move to a space, yes, it's the same business moving to another space, but they're moving to another space to, in most cases, to provide more jobs, to build the business and what they can provide for the community. So, George, I bet you would like another round here.
Yes, I would, please. Thank you. Yeah, you know, that's a big part of the discussion, is what is the public benefit? And I, urban renewal's been used to do things that were turned over or acquired by private entities, and also to build public edifices. It didn't finance the library fully, but I think it helped, it paid off the bond and made a significant contribution. And I would say, yay, bravo. That's one of the coolest things, the most important civic institutions that we have in town. So I, you know, I think most of you know that I've been an opponent of many of the urban renewal proposals. That doesn't mean that I reject it out of hand. However, when I first got on council, I requested, and staff complied, it was really great. They brought over all the archival material from the urban renewal district downtown, parked it in the atrium in a room, and told me the combination of the lock, and I went over there every day for many, many scores of hours. I didn't keep a time card, but I poured through every 33 of the boxes in there, like this, like this, and this line. And they only went from 1964 to 1973. It took many weeks to go through all the material. I also read material from, you know, online from many other studies all across the country. I provided council with, I don't know if I made copies or gave the website for the Iowa State Economist's analysis of every urban renewal district in the state of Iowa. Very extensive study. It's about 50 pages. They determined there was no net benefit to any city or county in Iowa. In fact, there was a net, and that bad, bad effect, really. Minnesota basically did the same thing as did Michigan. There are success stories, though, on the other hand. So, you know, it's not a blanket criticism of the mechanism. I, you know, and I want to thank staff, and Denny in particular, for providing all these answers, but I feel that a lot of the data is still incomplete, specifically, or misleading, not by intention, not by intention, I'm not pointing fingers. You know, questions eight through 10 particularly, break down all the costs of staff time spent on the visioning for, you know, Walnut Station and the Riverfront Research Park and the E-Web, and, you know, it says one FTE is budgeted for FY '13, but I looked up the, I have a copy of the Walnut Station plan, and 17 staff members signed their name as authors, plus one intern, and some of the funds were drawn from Riverfront Urban Renewal District, and some were drawn from planning and development, from the general fund. So, you know, there's, we still don't know the total cost.
So I've got Mike, because he had his hand up before, and then I've got Greg and Betty. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. George, one of the things I deeply appreciate about working with you on council is the amount of homework and research that you do, like you just discussed. You can hardly ever dispute your information that you gather because you do such a thorough job. I sometimes dispute your conclusion, but I can almost never dispute your homework, and I appreciate that about you. I agree with the mayor that our community is a little different, and we find community benefit and community value in things that may be different than other communities do. Those folks may benefit some of the public expenditures of tax increment financing, even though it doesn't increase the tax base as much as would be the case if we invested those extra dollars in private projects. We certainly get a public benefit from that. My opinion is the best public benefit comes when we increase the tax base, because then we have more revenue to deal with other things. Thank you, sir, very much. If the tax base is the goose that laid the golden eggs, why then tax increment financing feeds the goose, as it were, in order to increase the base? I do appreciate the Holt Center and the library and some of those other expended dollars in that way, but my chief point in bringing that up before is, there are a number of folks, George and others, who look at urban renewal and see it as a net negative, as something we shouldn't have. And the basis, and I'm not pointing this at George certainly, but the basis that many of them will use is its success or failure at its capacity to increase property values as the measure. And I'm saying, for those that disagree with tax increment financing, because it doesn't raise the base, tax base quickly enough or as thoroughly as other things do, I would say, that is the case when it's used as it was intended, but our community uses it differently for other benefits. Were we to use it solely in that way, we would see a, it is my opinion that we would see a more significant increase in the tax base. And as a side note, with the issues around revenue that we're going to, and new revenue that we're going to be tackling with Budget Committee things, this is going to probably come up again, at least for me, that increasing our tax base is the certain, most certain and most intelligent way for us to find new revenues that we need for other expenditures. Thank you.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with most of what you said, Mike, and as well as George. I think that I want to take a little bit of a different look at this. I look at this as a portfolio style of investment in the community. And the thing that we are not seeing or we're not talking about here is that 500-pound elephant is sitting in the middle of the table, and that's the qualitative nature of the investment that we get the return from by, you know, just looking at the physical improvements, the visual improvements to the areas of the district, even though it may be, you know, in the public realm, in the public sector, it also will begin to drive, and it has demonstrated in other cities and in this city as well, to drive precisely the kind of private investment that you're talking about. And so I think that you just don't look at this in a linear fashion. This is a very- This is a very, this is a very, you know, multi-dimensional kind of tool that will, you know, realize multi-dimensional results that, you know, some of which can be measured in a quantitative fashion, but others will not be able to be measured in a quantitative fashion. But we have to look at how we assess the qualitative value of those kinds of investments. And I, you know, in my, my estimation, I think that that's an incredibly important factor. You know, sometimes, you know, looking good has its benefits, you know? And I really think that the better that our areas look, the more public investment that we have will eventually create and drive the kind of private investment that you so eloquently articulate.
Betty.
Thank you. I want to say something about the library. And I think Glenn is the only person left who can validate what I'm going to say. But I was, I was one who said, the first person since I've been on the council who insisted we could use urban renewal for the library. The money was already there and there were people saying, no, we can't use it for that. And I, there may have been people in previous councils who said that, but I insisted, I said, is it legal? And finally, it was Glenn who said, it's legal if you want to do it. And we finally did it. I think that's not the only way we could have gotten the library, however. There were, there were another, a number of failed attempts, but they were kind of stupid attempts. There was one to combine it with Pancow, and people have forgotten all about Pancow, but it was some business that was coming to town and they were going to have a library in a part of their building. And then there was, and that wasn't very attractive. Then there was a move to use the old Sears building for a library, and that was not attractive. Then there was an attempt to combine it with a fire station on a ballot. And it was, I think people don't like to vote for two things at once, and that didn't work. I think, but every time though, it was close to passing because people did want a library. So I think we, if we'd just cleanly said a library, it would have happened. But since the urban renewal money was there, I said, why can't we use that for the library? That's when I was running for my first term 100 years ago. And eventually, we did it. And that was a good use since it was already there, but I think there are other ways to do it. I think about, currently, I think the development of the riverfront can wait, especially since we are having such budgetary problems, that there are many other uses for infrastructure money and for the money we would get if we terminated the urban renewal district. For example, we could use sidewalks all over town. I know that we now make people pay for their own sidewalks, but it would be a good use of, of money instead of new infrastructure. We could bury the utilities. And there are many other things that we need money for. A homeless shelter, for example. And as for raising the tax base through urban renewal, you have to terminate it sometime if you're going to get that tax money. And our downtown one has been extended over and over. It's never been terminated. And the, the frozen part would have increased if, the value has increased on the frozen part, but the money does not go into the general fund because it still goes to urban renewal. And that goes on for centuries. That's all my time. Thank you.
Can we call you the Terminator from now?
Just a couple of comments is that I'm of the belief that urban renewal is a tool. And so you can use that tool well or you can use it badly. I think we've had the experience of both. And of course, I would like to only use it in a way that really benefits us in the long haul and we look back and say, that was a good, that was a good investment. I don't think there's, in the two kinds of looks at this, I don't think there's a right or wrong. I like what Greg said about a linear look is probably not the best, the most appropriate way to look at it. But I will say, a big loud statement of the, because I hear so much about it these days, the investment in our downtown, you cannot walk downtown now without somebody saying to you, it feels so different, it feels so much better, I feel better. You have people popping up with new ideas to add to the downtown that wouldn't, wouldn't have touched it a year or two ago. I mean, they would, they said they never believed it could ever be a future for downtown. And now people really believe there's a future. They see the change and they want to be, want to be part of it. We have a, actually a living example of how those investments can really pay off in terms that, in the short run and in the long run and what it brings with them. I think that's a sort of a perfect illustration of after many, many, many years of effort for it, really, doing what we want it to do. George, did you want another round?
Oh, yes, please.
I thought so.
I passed around a, just kind of an, an analysis of one property transaction, one property development, two parcels. Called from the information in the AIS, and it's a cost returns associated with the largest property transaction in the district. In '01, we paid AgriPac 4.1 million. '03, AutoCraft North, 826,000. We paid 813,000 for demolition of that property and 550,000 for relocation, for a total cost of preparing the property to, of 6.2 million. And then we add on the system development charges that we're paying Northwest Community Credit Union, that's 350,000. And the relocation of the historic building is 321,000. So the total cost for those two projects is 6.9 million. We sold the properties, both of them, to the federal courthouse and Northwest Community Credit for 5.1 million. 6.9 minus 5.1, we basically, we're in the hole 1.7 million on that transaction. The federal, we paid AutoCraft South, 824,000, and that's, the AIS says that's managed by the city parking program, so that's a potential sellable site, which would alter those figures, of course, once it gets sold. And the summary I came up with here is the Riverfront Urban Renewal District lost 1.8 million dollars on the transaction. The courthouse will never pay any taxes. Northwest Community Credit Union will pay taxes, but there won't be a net benefit. No benefit, net benefit will accrue to the district until the 675,000 in SDCs and relocation costs are quote unquote paid back and then we get back to zero. That's going to be several years from now. I'm not really sure. I don't know what kind of taxes they'll be paying, but I just kind of extrapolated eight to nine years. The district will see a net benefit in taxes. It'll take many, many, many more years to see a net benefit from the money that we lost on the sale of the property to the federal courthouse. So I'd like to see, you know, and formulate some more questions for later about the property transactions and the returns in the Riverfront Research Park. As far as I know, there's been no expenditures in the Walnut Station area, physical infrastructure or property transactions, other than the planning efforts for the Walnut Station area plan. And I'll like another round too, please.
Greg.
A quick question for staff, Denny, and maybe anybody else who might be able to answer this. Given the technology that we have today, are there any tools that, for instance, a 360 kind of tool that would, you know, more accurately assess public benefit from this kind of urban renewal investment? And give us, you know, what I would consider a better snapshot view, if you will? Because I, I'm one of those people who don't always believe everything is measured in, you know, a P and L statement and what we have in terms of what we get out of our direct investment. The indirect benefits or the collateral benefits, I think are as, as, as important as what we get out of the initial investment that you put in. It's like having kids, you know? If you, you can invest thousands upon thousands of dollars in your children and you may not see that return on investment until they're 40 or 45, or whatever the case may be. But, you know, there is a significant definable, you know, tangible benefit. And I'm just kind of trying to figure out, you know, are there tools that can give us as a council and the community a better picture of what we get out of these investments? Not just the, you know, increase or, or tax revenue or the loss of tax revenue, per se.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. It's one of the things that we looked at when we started to look at the task at hand, which was to do a cost benefit analysis, what does that really mean? There's a lot of different models. We've looked at some, you know, there's, you know, Smart Growth America and all these others that look at both tangible and intangible. And I think you've hit on a really important point is that you really do have to consider not only the, the bottom line financial outcome, but there's a lot of other intangible things like education and health and social equity and all these things that we really have to consider. And I guess what I was trying to say earlier in my comments was, when each one of these investments comes to the table, so to speak, that's the opportunity to do that analysis. It's hard to do it today when we don't really know what the projects are in the future. We know what we've done in the past. And I would suggest that when we get to those opportunities, that we look at a modeling of some sort, and we can look at all different kinds of things that are out there as a way to have more information about what are the cost benefits of these decisions that we're going to make on specific expenditures and specific projects.
And to follow up real quickly on that, is there a specific tool or tools that would give us a better picture of a triple bottom line analysis for these kinds of things?
Interestingly, we have, through lane livability, our lane livability work, we have been working with the university to look at some triple bottom line tools. For example, they helped us develop a triple bottom tool for our brownfields program. It's a way of looking more broadly of not just the economic outcomes of brownfields, but what are the social equity issues with environmental issues? I don't know why that can't, couldn't be replicated in other projects, urban renewal projects, downtown projects. You know, it, it would need to be developed. I mean, I think the, the knowledge is out there. I mean, the triple bottom line knowledge is out there. It's just turning it into a tool.
Mike's the Q and Betty. My only question about that, Denny, is that it seems to me that the time you want to figure out what tool you want to use for this and other projects is before you're doing them. So that you've agreed, this is the way we're going to approach them. And we'll be looking sort of at, to some extent, apples to apples as we go through different things, instead of every time we come to something, sort of coming up with a slightly different way that we approach it or having the same discussion over and over again. If we could come to some kind of agreement as a, as a council, as an organization about the way that we think we can get the best information to make the best decision in a more full cost way, that could probably be helpful. And it's probably, as I said, might better be done before we get to that decision-making point. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't envy you or staff the, the task of, although I agree with my, my friend Greg about the value of such a tool, I, I wouldn't envy you the task of creating a tool that measured public value. I think from the discussion, maybe public values in the eye of the beholder to a certain degree. There are those that would think creating, using those tax dollars for the creation of a library or halt center is of a greater or lesser public value than an increase in the size of the tax base that would help us with our ongoing funds necessary for some of the programs that the city does. So I, I would wonder which is a larger public value and how to measure that. I, I couldn't possibly imagine how you would do. But I think it's important for us to make sure that we have that conversation, kind of honestly and openly, that it's not the dichotomy as kind of has been suggested of an increase in private property values versus the public good of some of those other projects. I think there's an extreme public value in the increase of our tax base. I think that's, that can't be understated and it's important to talk about. But I think, I think George's information here creates really where I was trying to take my comments. This talks about the success or failure of the district because at some point, there are those in our community who don't agree with the idea of urban renewal will say, maybe we shouldn't have the, the district there for, for now. I would suggest we probably should. But for those who would look at it and say, see, we lost money, I would say, we intended to lose money. We used most of it for public good that was not intended to create long-term increase in the tax base. And so thus we lost value, but we gained it in the indirect ways that you've mentioned. When we have such a question come up, I'd like to see us at least frame that question the way we should, which is to say, those dollars that could have been spent otherwise but were used in the way they were, really create a paradigm of, of a choice of public goods. Should we have used those dollars to create the sidewalks and the bike paths and the things around the creation of the federal courthouse and its creation itself, or in other urban renewal settings, the library or the halt center? Or should we have used those for general funds without the possibility that they could grow into larger numbers later?
Betty.
Thank you. One problem I have with urban renewal is it's too easy to spend the money. And I know, Denny said, we vote on it if it's a large expenditure. I'm sure we didn't vote on building that underpass. Correct?
It was a long time ago. I'd have to do some research.
I remember it. We didn't vote on that. And that would, had to be very expensive and it was for no, no purpose, as far as I can see. And we don't vote every time we use large amounts of staff time. And that is, one of our biggest expenses is personnel. And I just, I think it's too easy to spend the money. I have sometimes called it a slush fund, which made somebody pretty angry, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
George, I'd like to thank you for all the homework that you did and all the stuff you brought forth and all the questions you asked, which has elicited really good work with the city, from the staff to, to answer those questions. Your last piece of analysis here is good as far as it goes, but I don't think it's complete. It's missing the value of the land that we didn't sell that we used to create public benefit via the sidewalks and the streets. So if you added that, I don't know what the value that is. It was a good chunk of the land that we didn't sell on purpose because we wanted to create that infrastructure, which is public benefit. So the analysis here is good, but it doesn't include that value that the public got, which also stimulated the investment. So if we could add that in, I think this, this analysis would, would be different. I don't know if it would show that it ended up being a good, good deal, but, but I think that's part of the analysis that's not, not there. So if you could figure out what that, part of that value is, that'd be good too. You'd have to subtract out the cost of the roads, building it though. You know, there's been a lot of conversation here about what, basically kind of what's the role of government. And to me, the role of government in part, of many parts that we do, but in part, it's in this particular context, is to provide and plan for the infrastructure necessary to attract investment, either public or private. And, and I think urban renewal does that. The other part of the conversation that's kind of interesting, but not where I want to see this conversation go, is that it's looking in the rearview mirror and saying, here's what we did. And that's all fine and it's, and dandy, but I think our conversation really should be forward-looking. And, and the question I think we should be discussing is not what we did before, but where would we go if we moved forward? And, and what exactly would we spend this money on? What would we get for it? What's the public benefit? And is it worth it? Those are all good questions. So for me, the issue should be, should we keep the Riverfront Urban Renewal District to help create and enable the River, E-Web Riverfront Master Plan and all the investment that it... And all the investment that we see that would take to create that investment for public and private investment to occur there? And public benefits that we create by the Greenways and the other places? And what specifically would we spend that money on? Can we agree on it? If we can agree on it, can we restrict it, put it in a lockbox and say, this is what we're going to spend it on? Those are the questions that I would like to have a conversation about as we move forward.
Thank you, Al Gore.
I was just going to say, are you really comfortable with the lockbox thing? Okay.
I think it was a lockbox is because of that. That's a good question. Lockboxes, no, we can't.
I did want to, you all make me think about the Eighth, the road that we built through that, that area that I use all the time now. I always go that way from Franklin over to this area of town. And so if I were looking at the benefit, I'd have to look well beyond the benefit to that specific area, because it has benefit to the whole community for moving people and goods from one part of the community to the other. And so it even has a broader, a broader cost benefit than is immediately apparent from when you lock it into that, that particular spot. Any, George, you want to have anything else?
Oh, yes. Yeah, well, you know, I mean, that would be maybe the second road built in the whole city with urban renewal funds. And we have, we have other ways that we can build roads. We have other ways that we can acquire parkland. You know, we're going to have a park in the eWeb property, and I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to be nice to have a public park there. But we have a, you know, the voters passed a park bond a few years ago to acquire parkland. So, you know, there's certain things you need urban renewal for, and there's certain things you don't need it for, if you have other mechanisms. So, you know, we obviously can't figure everything out today. I think it's probably going to take another meeting. And by the way, other than discussing the sale of the property to Northwest Community Credit Union, this is the first time we've had any kind of, even a superficial look at the Riverfront Urban Renewal District. And since I've been on council, we have never sat down and really pored over this stuff. It's always, usually comes in the form of, at budget time, plop, here's the document, and then later, here's the supplemental budget, go ahead and pass it. And we haven't really examined it. So that's, that's what we're doing today. There's still some unanswered questions, and I've thought of a few more. I have no, I had no thought of taking any actions, like today, making any kind of a motion. But I think we need to keep going with this analysis. And my, my question just comes back to, you know, we really, we really bear heavy-duty responsibility to the taxpayers, as, as the board members of the urban renewal districts, both of them, to make sure that their tax money is being spent efficiently and to produce a beneficial result for the community. And, you know, when I see this new statistics, we know that homelessness is increasing every year. We know that the rent and burdened percentage of people that live in Eugene, when I got on council four and a half years ago, it was 40%. It's 56% now. Over half the people in town are rent burdened, are paying more than 30% of their income on their housing. We know that food stamp use has gone up. We know that welfare cases have gone up, unemployment is still a tough one. It's gone up, it's come down a little bit. We're still in a recession. Indicators are positive to a degree, but certain other indicators have gotten a lot worse. And so, you know, we just need to ask ourselves, is it, is it worth it to withhold these funds from the general fund to the detriment of all these other programs? Or is it not? And that's a council decision. Did I go over?
Yeah. But there's nobody in line, so I'm just, sorry. I'm just sitting there watching. I didn't get you, Betty, is another round. So I've got you, Betty. Claire, you're next.
Thanks. Well, thanks. I do appreciate the look back. I think it's important, particularly for those of us who are newer on the council. But I also agree with Councilor Zelenka's view that we really need to decide what we want to do with this, this tool now. And I can see with the eWeb master plan redevelopment, that there could be some real valid use for the district. And then also, what Councilor Zelenka was saying about trying to assess the value of those public infrastructure improvements, this would be a teeny tiny part of it, I think. But my assumption is that the parking meters that were installed on Eighth were not there before, when it was a cannery.
I think that's correct, yes.
So although not everyone likes the fact that we have parking meters on the street, they, you know, are a way for us to realize some increased revenue. It's a, it's a public benefit to provide street parking like that, and it's not something that we're required to do.
They should.
Go.
It's my, it's my time. It's my time, boys.
Just saying.
And then I must, I would assume that we could use some of these urban renewal funds to support an affordable housing project, whether that was a nonprofit housing project or a private developer. Would that, would that be true?
Yes, there could be some infrastructure, land acquisition. Yeah, absolutely.
System development, wave, speedways.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Betty?
Okay. I think we have different philosophies.
Really?
Yeah. I just decided that.
Give you 100 years to do that.
Betty Taylor.
A council meeting or late night with David Letterman.
Betty Taylor, a Piff.
Yeah, I just decided that. I think infrastructure to attract investment is not, I think first, there should be infrastructure for the use of current residents and to improve the quality of life before we put in things to attract someone else to come. And that's a difference in philosophy. I've heard somebody once say, I think some people care more about the people who are already here than the ones who will come. Well, of course, I think that's obvious. We should care more about the people who are already here. And as for looking, and looking backward has been mentioned a few times at this table. I think it's really important to look backward, because you learn from what's happened in the past. You learn from past mistakes and past successes. And it's not, looking at downtown urban renewal, looking backward, you certainly see many mistakes, all the things that were destroyed through it. And it's, it's important to be aware of the things that have happened before we think about what we're doing in the future. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
It just makes me think about, that's why you're all here, because you have those different points of view, and you, and people in the community will look at each of you and see someone that they think is representing their, their perspective and their points of view. And that's an important part of community discussion. So I think everybody's got an important role at the table in this and every kind of policy discussion, just because we do have all these different points of view. We have a couple more minutes, George, if you have anything left.
Well, I certainly do, Mayor. You know, this is a pretty complex subject, and this is really the first time we've discussed it as the, as the whole district in at least four and a half years, and probably longer than that. So I think we're going to have to have some more discussion. I'm not going to propose a work session immediately or anything like that. I'm not going to make any motions, let's sunset it immediately, nothing like that. But I think we need a little more data and a little more analysis. Some of the questions were not, were not fully answered about fully loaded costs of staff time. And, you know, net jobs created, net housing created, things like that so far. And we've, you know, we've been going for 39 years with the, I don't know, 29 years with the district so far. It's set to sunset in 2024. Of course, future council could certainly decide to extend it, just like different councils did with the downtown urban renewal district, which is in its 50th year now, started in 64. I think it was, it's become pretty clear, especially during the last, you know, election, that large segments of the population are kind of getting tired of some of the ways that we use our tax money, MUPD and some of the urban renewal things. So, I mean, you know, and it's, and it's a council decision. In a way, it's a value decision, but you have to follow the money, too. You have to do a, do a financial analysis, is what we're kind of attempting today. You have to look at the money. You have to follow the money, because it's people's tax money, and it can be used for ill or for, for good. And we would never do it for ill purposely, of course, but sometimes you make a mistake, you pursue a program that's not that effective, and you, you can waste it. So I don't know, you know, and I, so I may, I may propose send out another work session request in the future, with the rationale of why I think we need to discuss this again, and councilors, and approve it or not approve it. But I think, I think we should keep the discussion going. And really, I think in the back of our minds, as we think about this, I think we need to kind of ask ourselves a question, or have it in the back of our mind, how does the Riverfront Urban Renewal District help the average Eugene taxpayer, the average citizen? Is it, is it a good idea to keep investing all these funds at the expense of human services or, or investments in Trainsong or Befo or Highway 99 or other areas of town that where blight truly does exist? So just something that we need to keep, keep in mind. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that we would anticipate having at least one or two more conversations about this, because the whole eWeb project, of course, will be coming up. And so there will be eventually some decisions that the council will be, have an opportunity to make. So we would already anticipate having additional work sessions about the Riverfront Urban Renewal District, regardless whether you choose to poll or not. So there will be some more coming up. Thank you.
So probably what would be helpful, and I think you've heard some of it today, but if there's something that didn't come up around the table today about questions that you would like, like I think, George, thank you for all the work that you've done on this. I think your question is, does it really benefit the community? And does it benefit enough? Is there a better use of the same dollars? That's what I, what I heard.
That's pretty much.
And I think Alan was saying, well, if we're going to use it, how would we use it? And what kind of structure would we put around it? And Mike's is, you know, where should we be aiming those, those dollars? And what's the criteria that we would, we would have for that? So I think people have brought up, and if there's more, then I think it would help us plan for the next meeting, if you were, were clear about the kinds of discussions you would like to have and the decision points that you might like to see come up. I know the city manager will have his own decision points, but I think we are open to decision points that you all would like to see as well. Alan?
Well, yeah, I'd add to that list there, which is a very good recap, is the public benefit part. And we struggle with that. The whole MUPD conversation, this conversation, the analysis that George is doing, you have the numbers and the costs and the benefits and the revenue, and then there's the public benefit, which is over here. And we, and we don't mesh those two things together. We can't translate the public benefits, say, of the change in flow of the Eighth Avenue and all that, and the value of the sidewalks and all that. What kind of public benefit does that bring to the equation? And does that offset some of the costs? You know, if we, if you just looked at, for instance, parks, there isn't a single park that we have that has a benefit on a financial basis. They all cost us an enormous amount of money. The public benefit that we have from those isn't easily quantified. And so you would say, from a financial standpoint, a park has no business having investments in parks, because there's no way to, to say that it has a positive economic benefit, unless you start to bring those, those public benefit things back into the equation. It's really difficult to do. Nobody really does it very well, anywhere. But I think it's something we always have to bring back into the equation and say, okay, yeah, we did all that, it cost this much, and we had these kind of investments, and it cost that much, but what did we get for it? And balancing those two things is what I think we have to do here at the council. Those are the tough things to do.
Mike, and then we'll wrap it up.
I just, part of that, the way Alan framed that concerns me, is what I mentioned earlier. There's a, there's an issue that, that kind of false dichotomy, that one part is about a financial question, and the other part is about public benefit. My point is, it's all public benefit. It's simply a question of, how do we get there? With a financial question, you can quantify it very easily and say, that's tax money that would go to other public benefit. So it's, it's not simply one against the other. It's all public benefit. It's a question of which one is greater. And I hope we, for those that tend to be against tax increment financing, that we make sure we have the conversation on that basis.
And Greg?
Ergo, Councilor Zelenka, my argument about having a realistic assessment tool that gives us what I believe is the bottom line goal here, and that is the quality of life. As you point out, you know, you don't measure parks in terms of dollars and what that investment gives us back to the overall quality of life in the community. But there are ways, and there are ways that are continuing to evolve right now, that gives us, that can give us that kind of assessment and evaluation that determines that, you know, what people come here for, you know, and move here for, for years and years and years, including myself and some of the rest of you around the table, is because of the quality of life. Would you rather be in Eugene or Detroit? Would you rather be in Eugene or Cleveland?
Fair question.
Yeah, it is. It is a fair question, because it, because again, it becomes a bottom line quality of life issue. And I know that there are many people who have taken, you know, pay cuts to come here and live and raise their families because, precisely because of the quality of life that is here. And so that is a major feather in our cap, and we need to do a better job of articulating what that quality of life is and how these benefits accrue to that, that account or that fund.
And with that, we will close the meeting. Thank you.
Very hard to do.